The planning commission. I'd like to call the planning commission to order at seven thirty two P M on December fifth, twenty twenty two. I'll first start with roll call. I'm present as the chair, Luke Maruziak. Vice Chair Tesman. I'm not present. Commissioner Alef.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert. Let's see. Commissioner Mather. And Commissioner Smith.
Here, looks like Vice Chair Tesman is up being elevated. Never mind.
Vice Chair Tesman.
Here, sorry, I'm late.
Okay. So currently we're missing Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Mather. Do we have any? Emails letting the staff know they would not be present?
Nothing from either of those two.
Okay.
They did make sure to send the meeting package to. Personally emails that I had.
Okay. I'd like to. Ask for a move that we approve. The agenda for today, December fifth, as written. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Today's agenda is so approved. And I'd like to continue. The. Public hearing for the historic design review procedures and site plan permit code amendments. I have a script here. I'm going to read into the record. This is the public hearing portion of our meeting. Two public hearings this evening. The first is regarding the historical design review amendments. The second is the site plan permit amendments. And this is continued from the public hearing opened on November twenty first. And this proceeding community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal to adopt code amendments for the historic design review amendments and site plan current amendments. Those wishing to speak during the public comment. If they've signed up, please notify us and speakers will be called in order. If there's online attendees, please raise your hand. Showing that you are wishing to provide public comments. Your name will be added to the signup sheet. And we'll alternate speakers if necessary by calling one person and then the next. Press star nine to raise your hand to speak. Raise your hand signals to the media moderator that you have a comment and state your name, city residents for the record. Direct your comments to the commission as a whole, not to individual members. And please note that it's not time to ask questions of the commission or staff were to engage to debate. The commission will quietly and respectfully listen to your comments. You have three minutes to speak. We have thirty seconds left. You will see a yellow flashing light. Online will advise you thirty seconds to please finish up your comments. So please press star nine and raise your hand if you have to speak. And we're opening to members of the public at this time. Staff, do we have any? Members present wishing to speak to these two. Amendments.
No chair, we do not.
And I see none online. Is that correct? Did we receive any emails? For consideration to these amendments?
No, we received no emails or letters or any other communication about these.
Okay, that being the case. And now declare the public hearing on historic design review amendments and site plan permit amendment closed at seven thirty six P M. On December fifth. Twenty twenty two. Okay, with that. Public hearing done, I move to approve the minutes dated November twenty first, twenty twenty two. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, at this point, we're going to review. The historic design procedures code amendments, and this should be very familiar as we've gone through this. There has been, since we last come through. Detail a legal review. And the we've confirmed that the correct packages are in here for item number three and item number four. So staff, do you wish to cover some of the the points on that or Mr. Sterbank?
I'll defer to Mr. Rogers. Unless he's looking for something from me here.
No, no, it's fine. Sure, just a quick programming note for you to take at your convenience. This version of the agenda doesn't have the. Council liaison report on it.
Oh, sorry. Good point. Good point.
Part of the part of the template for some reason, so just bring it to your attention. I'm really happy to defer and want to get to the council liaison now.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point. Definitely. Let me go back to the agenda and move that we amend to agenda to add the council liaison report.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Without further ado, can we? Ask for the council liaison report this time?
Great greetings, Commission. I got two things to talk to you about tonight. What is the at our last council meeting? The council approved the. The. Understanding with Northwest trunk lines. The M O U basically says that the city is going to give Northwest trunk lines. The information that they need relevant to the site they're looking at, a few other things related to code and stuff. As they need it while they develop a viable business plan. But Northwest trunk lines is responsible for developing. And presenting that plan. The current plan as it is, which is not really a plan yet, but the current idea, I guess I should say, is to have the museum on the. Lot that we sometimes loudly call the tree lot. It's the one that's right at the corner of St. Pauline Parkway and two oh two. And I also wanted to add, since we do have the trees there right now, there was some concern from the council. Well, what's going to happen to the trees? Well, Northwest trunk lines apparently is already in talks with the tree farm to make a plan to continue that annual tradition of having the trees there. So they'll all get rolled into whatever the final plan is that's presented, but we did approve the M O U to keep the ball rolling.
Okay.
Other thing that I want to tell you folks about is that the council also adopted the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget. The council was very conservative in our revenue forecasts. As we could be heading into recession for all we know, so we're not really sure how much economic. Activity there's going to be over the next couple of years. And inflation is still high, though unpredictable. Maybe it's leveling off. Maybe it will come down. Maybe it won't. Who knows? So we were just somewhat conservative. In terms of how we look at the budget because of those uncertainties. But here are a couple of highlights. We did maintain our high levels of service across the board. We increased spending on human services. And I've gone to the planning commission. We funded council chambers A V upgrades. So when you guys are ready to come back, you can enjoy those hopefully. And. The non utilities C I P also includes some pretty fun stuff over the next couple of years that hopefully the council will approve. Such as a beauty park spray ground project and a number of other things you can find in the C I P. But I'd be happy to take any questions you folks have.
Any questions from the commissioners?
No.
Good. I do have one. From a budgeting perspective, was is our revenue in twenty twenty two projected to be bigger than twenty nineteen pre pandemic?
Good question. I don't have an answer to you right off the top of my head, but it's something that we can give back to the commission.
Okay, I was just curious. If we totally recovered from the business businesses that struggled during the pandemic. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the number right.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate giving the opportunity to add that agenda item. So if we move on to the legislative policy items, regulations. Item number three, the historic design review. Procedures code amendments.
Thank you, Chair. Jason Rogers with the community development department. So when you have in front of you, I'll start with the historic design procedures code amendment. And we have two exhibits here for you. One of the table changes, we've been updated to reflect the current. Final version of the amendments and of course the amendments themselves. So the table provides a good summary for you and some of the things that. One of the things I want to highlight for the. Commission here that differs from fire burdens you saw is we made some significant adjustments. To the historic chapter to incorporate provisions that were formally incorporated by reference from the county code. And so you see this on this first line of your booking counting provisions directly in the system funding code. We're doing this for a couple of reasons. One is that when we are referencing external code. That code can change and we automatically adopt it. That may not necessarily be appropriate in all cases. And so moving them into our code directly gives us. That greater degree of control. It also makes administration a little easier because we're not having to go out and find. Oh, where King County's code is is exactly and would take it up. We have it directly in that code. It also allows us to tweak things a little bit to account for some policies, you know, individual unique circumstances that, you know, where King County's code, of course, is given with King County circumstances. For example, you know, we have a. A separate landmarks commission from what King County has. And so that's one little way we can make a tweak to where we can set some of the procedures one differently. And so what you see in here now, and there is an awful lot of. Strike room. So you see here, this is that first section that we leave now. That references all these sections to the King County code. You then have to go through, and this is most of the city attorney's work here, go through and add things in the right place. So we're adding. In here, here's a bunch of definitions that we're now instead of referencing the King County code, now they're directly the city's code. Search it for appropriate this there for this new subsection key. You know, adding our here to more heritage. So you know, we go on like this. There are additional examples further down. Here, you know, designation criteria. This is criteria for how you designate a historic landmark. You want to say the historical resource. And this is of course pulled from the King County code duplicated here. Of course, we're changing references to cities in the following instead of King County. You know, again, nomination procedure, having nominated. And then, of course, a designated. So those things are all picked up on the inserted. That's why this code is very, you know, this document is very lengthy. Here you see the twelve page thing when it used to be four or five pages. Nothing else is really changing. When we get something clean up work that we had identified in earlier discussions with the planning commission. You know, where it has numbering issues, if it's weren't, you know, we have references to. Four types of historical designer reviews that are three. So those things are all cleaned up. Going back to the table. Here now. I think the. The other main adjustment we made is to. How we're handling the appeal process for historical design review. And what we are doing now is instead of, so the commission will recall that when the. When the planning mission sitting at the historical letter you were makes a decision. A party could appeal that this event to the city council. We now change that to be to the hearing. Made some tweaks to. The code to really account for that to say, but we're going to send all the appeals to hearing. That the examiner is that independent body, trained land use professional using attorney. Who can, you know, really review all all the facts and come to a defenseable decision rather than have the city council be having to handle that. Decisions by the landmark conditions, so that would be on designating landmarks would still go to the city council. Ultimately, those are. It's a different type of decision. You know, it's really a policy decision and therefore the council is the appropriate body for those appeals. And then some of the other ones we cleaned up just. For procedural issues, limited deals, you know, when you have to submit a appeal by who it goes to reference and errors in the code and make it a little more clear. So that's my highlights. I'm certainly able to answer specific questions if you found them and saw the city attorney here as well. So hopefully between two of us we can. We can get anything we have question.
Okay, as a way of. Procedure here, what I'd like to do is I'm going to move that we approve these amendments. For recommendation to the council. Ask for a second at that point. If we have any discussion, we'll cycle around to discuss if we want any additions or changes to that. And if not, then we'll go ahead and vote on it. So at that point, I'd like to move that we approve the historical design procedure code amendments as covered. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, now I'd just like to poll our commissioners, any? Discussion points of what we've just heard. Or what we've covered over the last couple of months. So Vice Chair Tesman.
No questions for me, Chair.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yeah, so first I appreciate the summary table. That's super helpful. I I apologize if this has been covered already and it slipped my mind. Can Jason, can you? Can you remind me the benefit of? Copy pasting the King County code into the snow quality code in this case?
Sure. The benefit is there are two main benefits here. First is that it is a little easier on staff to go and look up the provisions because. So before we have this section, which has some specific references to sections of the King County code, and that's all well and good. It tells us exactly where to go. But then we have to have flash and look up the code, which. Can be tricky because the King County code is. Very large. And we have to pick on these individual sections, a little bit full of search. So one aspect is simply getting these things into our code, which is simply easier for us to find. The second is that. We are, if you will, at the mercy of the King County council can change these codes, the King County code, the Pauline code. The King County council could change these codes. We even do anything about it. We would just, you know, they're adopted by reference. And so one thing that's helpful to us is to say, look, we don't necessarily want to change it. Now, King County were to adopt some changes, we may want to take them up. We give to our own process to there. And then our own code at that point, but this gives us a level of certainty. And a level of understanding how our own code is functioning without being completely reliant on another government agency to to rewrite the codes for us. And so this will help with both predictability and uncertainty going forward.
Thank you. I guess is 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 the. Our is the city in some way. You know. I don't know, subordinate to the to the King County language on this particular topic, or is there any sort of relationship between? The city's activities when it comes to landmarks? And historic historic buildings and the county's treatment of them?
I wouldn't call necessarily a subordinate relationship. You know, the county's code is in general very good as to, you know, the the nonation procedure, designation procedures. You know, how it deals with economic en masse. It's more a matter of, you know, we we have some home landmarks. Landmarks designated. We want to maintain control of that process to designate our landmarks as the ultimately if it comes to the city councils instead. And not be, you know, and if. If in going through this process, the city council, you know, whether or I should say the planning mission and or the council decides. Hey, we need to tweak this. We have the freedom to tweak it by saying, hey, this part of the nomination procedure, for example, doesn't work. We need to approach it in a different way now. And King County may may just choose to continue going on their path because. As a different and also much larger government organization, they have a whole office devoted to to store preservation and things like that. We have. What we. And and empty here. So it's a it's a little different. We can certainly have consultants to help us, but there's just a different level of organizational. Ability here and having our own control really helps. It's not like the thoughts that will kind of subordinate relationship per se. It's just. You know, we we like we have to be masters of our own destiny. This way and can still be able to take advantage of this code that can carry.
Got it. So so it's sort of considered not not a best practice necessarily, but at least a good place to. A worthwhile place to start. And then I is that sort of the idea? And then if we want to make our own individual changes, we can do that. But otherwise. You know, is that sort of the idea?
Yeah, it is. It's the same with with this code as any other code the city has that. You know, we will, at some point we will apply this. We might find some things we need to fix, so we will tweak it. The same as we tweak all.
Okay. But it's not. It's not in here because we have to have the exact same procedure as King County or or anything like that. It's just a matter of kind of. Convenience and, you know, there's no point in in the city kind of recreating the wheel when it comes to these things. Is that that more or less it?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Goodman?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Alef? Commissioner Smith?
No, I believe we've. Covered all my questions over the last several meetings.
Okay, and I I agree. I. Yeah, I also like the fact that we're. Putting in King County, we're putting in verbiage rather than a reference, which could change. I actually like that fact. But at this point, I would then call for a vote. To provide the historic design procedure code amendment that we recommended to the council for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move that forward. The agenda item number four is site plan code amendments. And again, same procedure. I move that we approve the site plan code amendments. As written for recommendation to the council. Can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, could we? Staff, could we cover the the highlights?
Absolutely. So you see the same general approach. Here we have this table which has been updated with the current. Amendments here. And so this is a much shorter list, fortunately. And and this is going through and summarizing again. What the changes are, whether they're clarification, enhancement, simplification. And so the overall purpose of this is to create a new site plan from the process and to integrate it into the. The the regular design review. Chapter, not so not historic, this is regularly designed to be here. The intent here is to add this permanent process that we can utilize for all essentially non non single family. Types of development to allow us to review things like parking and landscaping. They aren't always necessarily subject to designer view. The commission, of course, recalled that there are certain things that that the designer board is don't have the authority to review, things like. Are the uses allowed? Or not? That's simply not within the commission's purview sitting at the designer board. So that's one of the main purposes of this. To accomplish all this, of course, we have to go through it and make some changes. One big change we also made here, which is related is we went through. So this is an existing table in chapter fourteen of the city's code. And this is where a lot of permanent procedures live. We went through a brandy list here of all the different permits and what category they fall into. So category one permits. Are the ones that don't even require notice application. They're they're straightforward, low level. We said they're still a permit. We're not going to send a neighbor notice. They don't even require a knowledge limitation. And so it's a number of permits in here, law adjustments being one example. Sign permits are another one. We get down to category two. These are still. What we call our administrative decision made by the community development director on the permit. These ones require our lower view. They're going to require a neighbor notice. So for example, a short, a short black would require that. Site plan permits probably going to fall in in that as well. Category three permits here are ones where the decision is made by. By the city council. And so the main examples here are, of course. Next two spinal plans. So there's another some more leadership coming in. That's a category three. And then, of course, the plant commercial industrial plan, the mill site, the sales log, those kinds of projects. Get a public hearing and recommendation by the planning commission, decision by the city council. You'll know it here. You've heard me refer to the appeal process we're going to do for historic designer view. That's now noted in here that. The appeal process for these historic designer news here are in fact. Going, you know, decisions made by planning mission, the appeal would be the hearing examiner. So we're kind of getting that in there. Into the table to make it. Well, there. And then the type four, category four decisions, those are decisions by the. Planning mission or the hearing examiner with an appeal to the city council. So long subdivision, so subdivision of five or more lots would be there. Conditionally used, there are no examples. They're the decided by the period. And then, of course, we'll get into, you know, here's what we're adding in the disciple. So, you know, we're adding some some more weight to the purpose and objectives here. A little bit of a thing of a language for the minor view board. And here's where we're trying to. So so these changes you see here. Are. You know, really try, you know, right now, this is a just one big round sense. And we're just putting it on this form to make it a little easier to understand. And finally, we get to the actual, you know, creating the site plan. Here is, you know, what it applies to. And so you can see, you know, non residential building and other structures. Certain types of expansions, remodels, new dwelling units. Change the use. So this is, these are the kinds of things that we want to review. We don't have an existing settlement process for. And so they're done at this point very informally through building permits, through designer view, through some other types of reviews that are always pulled together very well. Minor tweets, application requirements. And then here we have to change the title of this. There are no actual changes to the, this is the designer view that. You see the addition to what design because we're also inserting site plan sites into this chapter. So we need to differentiate between here's the guidelines for designer view. Here's the guidelines for site plan. So this is the designer view guidelines. We're not taking any of the actual guidelines. If you want to see any of that, we will underline or strike. And then here's we get to the site plan review criteria. Review criteria. And here's the things we're looking at. Use standards, area height setback, parking, landscaping. You know, do they have good access? Is it is the access going to be safe? Those are the times the things we're looking at. And then some minor tweets to to this referring to, it's not just action by the viewer now, it could be by the director. So this one's a little more straightforward in that regard. You can see it's only eight pages of twelve. It's just a. You know, we included the entire chapter here, which you can see, you know. Of course, with this big chunk of the designer new guidelines, nothing's actually changing other than the title of that section. So I'm happy to take questions on this one as well.
Again, thank you. Senior Planner Rogers, let me go and poll the council. I'll do it in reverse order this time. Commissioner Smith? Any comments or just for discussion?
Not immediately, no.
Okay. Commissioner Alef?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Goodman?
All right, you're going to have to forgive me for asking this one, but and and this is probably just semantics. But I'm wondering, is is there a particular reason why we would have a. But and and this is probably just semantics, but I'm wondering, is is there a particular reason why we would have a separate? Body called the Design Review Board that is essentially just the planning commission, rather than saying the planning commission also does. Design review, like, is there a? Or or am I, am I just like totally over overdoing it by by asking?
It is, it is, it's a decent question. Um, I think the reason you have it this way is because of the way the code, the city's code is constructed to be entirely honest. We have, so the planning commission is established in title two of the city's code. Designer view lives in chapter seventeen eighty, so title seventeen, which is the zoning code. One thing we see, we've discussed this before regarding the historical review is the. The chapter seventeen thirty-five, the historic design review chapter establishes a separate historical design review board. Which has the most, I think, most of the commission knows has never actually been established. And so. Several years ago, the the city council passed the code change. It does date the planning commission as the interim historical one for which is the current state of affairs. Based on all this, it's. Now, this isn't, um, this is a conferring thing. You don't know for certain because this code is written many years ago now. It seems clear that they, there may have been intent to establish a separate designer view board, separate in the planning mission, and that's something that happened. Because the code has written. Get that on the screen here. We're scrolling to the. Members show. It's a designer view board consisting of members of the planning mission. They could have said something else. They could have said it consisted of members of the city council, community, development committee. They could have said it consists of. These five people with these qualifications, assuming that the historical designer reward is established in chapter seventeen thirty-five. Uh, so this appear and 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 so it appears that that's why we have it. And I think the city changed that position with everything.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. If I can chime in and and less as an actual background and more perhaps as supposition here, but. Uh. Snoqualmie is a relative to other jurisdictions, a small community. Your historically, the the city's pool of volunteers. Uh, being willing and able to to sit as you. You do through these meetings is limited. Uh, and so sometimes bodies. Are kind of pressed into doing double duty. And having a different name is a can is a helpful way to distinguish between. The planning commission's generally legislative function. Reviewing and making recommendations on code changes and on the comprehensive plan. Uh, as compared to the design review board sitting as a quasi in its quasi judicial capacity, deciding a land use application. With an applicant and potentially on on one side and opponents potentially on the other. So.
Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodman. Vice Chair Testman?
No questions for me. Thank you, staff.
Okay, I agree. I think, uh. I think this is good work. I I I agree with, I think, the general consensus. I like the tables. I think it make it very clear. So now that we've got the motion, the second, I'll call for a vote to approve submitting the comprehensive plan updates. To the city council. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, then, uh, check mark. Both the. Public hearings and the discussion, and we're ready to submit both historic design review procedures, the site plan code amendments to the council. Good. Got that down in twenty twenty-two by the whisker. So we'll move on to agenda item number five. The comprehensive plan update for committee developed director.
Um, I'll keep this one off and then it's usually beginning up here with to provide additional, uh. Color, can you say? It's totally interesting to see. So as the conditions aware, we have a comprehensive plan update. Coming up, it's due by the end of the year twenty twenty-four. And so we're looking to kick that off here, starting in January of twenty twenty-three. Um, GMA, and I think most of you know, is established in state law, specifically chapter thirty-six point seventy A, and has a whole. Broad list of subsections that identify other things. Mandatory elements of the comprehensive plan. When they need, when conference of when need to be updated, specifics on public engagement, for example, um. So. Um, we need to be updating the entire plan. This is considered a major update. It's something we only have to do once every eight to ten years. The last update was in twenty fourteen. Now we're here in twenty twenty-two and it's due by twenty, and like I said, in the twenty twenty-four. So there are the mandatory elements of comprehensive plan. These are land use, housing, capital facilities, utilities, transportation. Economic elements, and then you have a number of optional elements, parks for import is an optional element. Um. You know, we also have a community character element that is, you know, essentially not even listed anywhere in state law. We have it anyway to discuss. Our community character and other cities have this too. Uh, it's it's somewhat common to to try to get that local flavor incorporated into complex plans. Um, as I mentioned, another major part of this update is we have to have a public participation board. That's. Uh, for a specific section in state law. And so as we we start planning out how we're going to approach this update. Um, we have to consider, we have to work through all these these elements, all the goals and policies that are within these elements, uh, bring them up to date. Have the conversations with with the planning commission, with the community especially. Are these goals and policies appropriate? Is this where we want someone to be going and growing? Or not growing is the case they need over the next twenty years. Now, there are some things that are baked into this at this point. Uh, Councilor Johnson, the CD committee meeting before this heard an update on the housing action plan and also. Where the, uh, you know, essentially affordable housing departments are coming and and how that relates to the growth component is what you have planned for. They have to plan for fifteen hundred new housing units. And, uh, and thousands of new jobs. Now, some of those are baked in from the mill site developments. Uh, the other parts, we're going to figure out how that's going to work. Where are we going to put all these houses? Where are we going to put all these new jobs? And the state has now pushed down some additional requirements through, uh, it knows how still, uh. Twelve twenty, right? House Bill twelve twenty, which was passed in twenty twenty-one by the state legislature. Which is now mandating that we plan for a thousand different levels. This is the new requirement. It's a major change to how we. Do our housing elements and how we plan for housing. Before, we just had to plan for a straight number of housing unit growth. Didn't matter if it was market rate or all anywhere in between. Um, now we have the plan for housing down at the zero to thirty percent AMI level, and it's a significant need in that in the model. That's going to be a major challenge, not just for this community, but for all the communities in Washington State that are planning under the GMA. How would you want that as something that would be much of the stuff that we're meeting discussion. So as you heard me say before, um, public participation is certainly required by state law, but also we want to have a robust. Public participation process. We don't want this to just be a conversation between staff in the planning division, staff in the city council. Um, even though you, the commission, are, of course, volunteer representatives of the community, the council, of course, are elected official, represent the entire community, represent the community. We also need to hear directly from from the people who live here, from the business owners, from the people who just are coming to to shop here, the tourists here, that they're all part of this community in some way. Even, you know, certainly people who live here spend probably the most time here, but even the tourists matter because, you know, why are they coming so far? Why attract them so far? It helps our economy when they come here. So we want to hear all these people. We also have people who often don't participate in. These government planning processes. We have students, we have all the kids at Mount High School. Those kids, you know, some of them are certainly going to. Grow up, go to college, leave for other communities, other states. Some of them are going to stay here. I mean, all know people who grew up in the community and have lived in this intersection their whole life. Those people. You know, the the kids at school are the future. We want to hear them. Um, you know, we're going to want to talk to, you know, work with the ROA, the regional ROA to help get some more outreach. Chamber of Commerce, Stanton, all these are matter here. We're going to work hard to to reach out, try to get people to give some info, and it may not be, you know. The most specific information available. Sometimes it might just be. How do you feel about things? What do you, what do you think this the community needs? The general trips? Uh, we want to hear all that. So as we look to the schedule here, you heard me actually going to kick this off in January twenty twenty-three. And when we screen shots, you can at least see the general version of this. Schedule, I apologize for this thing, so. So what we have, we have a kickoff here in January, and and we're going to, of course, carry this comprehensive plan policy review, public engagement through the entire process from January twenty twenty-three all the way till. The city council takes an action on the three lines in our twenty twenty-four. And we're looking to really do this element, goals and policy review here. On the second line throughout twenty twenty-three. And we'll be looking to start reviewing and finalizing the first half of twenty twenty-four with an eye to getting into. The planning commission and city councils that they have, you know, you and the council have the time to really dig into this review. We don't want to rush you. Like, bring it to the planning mission in September, be after rush and get to council so that they can take action for the end of the year. That's not going to be productive. We really want the condition at the time. The council have the time to work through this. Of course, there needs to be a secret process. We'll do that in the second half of twenty twenty-three and then on probably in the early twenty twenty-four. And then, of course, you can see the legislative approach on your comedian council review starting probably the the first half of twenty twenty-four moving through. So that is the overview where we're going with this. I'm going to have to answer questions. The director is here, is here, and will answer some questions. Um, well, thank you very much.
No, thank you for that. Thank you for that. If I could add a a comment, uh, can I, can I share my screen?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so let me try. Um. So I was getting familiar with HB twenty twenty when it was flagged, and it really struck me. I'm going to try to share. Let's see here, page three of a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce. Do you guys see that? Right here? Do you guys see it? Oh, you do?
I see it there.
The the thing that that struck me was. The HB twenty twenty, again, this is from the Washington State Department of Commerce. Used to be encouraged availability of affordable housing to all economic segments. And right now, it's like. Plan for and accommodate. Housing affordable to all economic segments. That strikes me as they changed a should to a shell. And it's going to be pretty significant as we work through this. And, um, there's going to be a lot of discussion around it. So I just, uh. Wanted to highlight, you know, um, our senior planner talked about HB twenty twenty. Um, it's a big deal. It's a very big deal, and it's going to have quite an impact on this comprehensive plan. I think a bigger impact than. Um, than the previous twenty years. And the. Other one was kind of best efforts, and this is not saying best efforts. This is kind of saying you're going to figure it out and make it happen. So anyway, I just thought I would share that. Um. It is pretty interesting waiting through HB twenty twenty, just, um. How they're done, they're done saying try real hard on affordable housing, and they're saying this is what quantities you're going to have, make it happen. So. Yes, Mr. Chairman? I think you had your hand up. That was my cursor there.
Oh, no, I I I didn't, but thank you. I just to comment on that language, um, the the GMA uses. Uh, you know, various gradations of of verbs in goals like that, and. Uh, I think you're correctly noting the move away from, you know, just. Incentivize it. Um. I'm not sure that they could or that that language does actually say you have to make it happen. And certainly, when we met with commerce recently. On this topic, they they emphasize that in their view, the accommodate means. That the city needs to have affirmative steps or zoning. Uh, or designations in its comp plan and zoning to accommodate housing in the that. Uh, those brackets, while commerce certainly recognizes particularly for the lower brackets. There's very little way to, you know, quote unquote, make it happen unless there are subsidies and and commerce knows. And I think the the legislature, uh, legislative language recognizes that they don't have the ability to force cities to come up with money to fund. Um, you know, subsidize housing, uh, in that way. So I would just. Uh, I mean, the the chair is absolutely right on that. We're we're going to need to do it differently. Um, I'm not sure we have to. Walk away from the same. We're going to have to make it happen next.
Poor choice of words on the make it happen. Yeah. The the better way to say is rather than encourage, they said plan for and accommodate. That, let me just leave it at that. Yeah, that seemed much stronger. So. Yeah. But, um, no, appreciate it, uh. So any any other from staff, any other comments on the cop cop plan?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay, let me, uh. Back the agenda here. And. Okay, next. Uh, on the agenda item is items of planning commissioner interest. So again, I'll, uh, do the round robin. Uh, Vice Chair Testman?
No, I just, I appreciate that day we received, uh, on the Model Train Museum. That's that's great, especially the detail on the tree lot. I know that's going to make a lot of people happy. So, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Good. Uh, Commissioner Goodman?
Yeah, they they did their research on that, which reflects well on them. Um, but besides that, no, that's that's cool. I mean, might have a little, you know, train. Distraught or something. So that that's really neat. That's all, though, for me.
Good. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, the only item I was just curious about, I know as we've talked about in the past with various, uh, snow events, it seemed like. This one came on fast and and a little unexpected, but it seemed like, uh, it seemed like the city was on top of things, but curious if there's any feedback from. You know, kind of a a retrospective of of how it went or lessons learned, that sort of thing.
Um, I think, excuse me, in general terms, you're right. It did kind of come on a little bit suddenly, but we were prepared for it. Of course, we paid close attention to the weather forecasts. Um, certainly, there are a few lessons learned, especially as it relates to the side streets. Um. Our crews are set up and we have plans in place to make sure that the main roads, you know, two oh two, the parkway, Douglas Fairway are 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 plowed early and often. Um, the side streets become more challenging. Obviously, we try to get to those once the main event has ceased, if you will, so we're not continually playing, just. Keep keeping the parkway, for example, in in usable condition. Uh, but. For various reasons. Not all the side streets got plowed, either maybe at an optimal timing or or well enough. And so it it's things that we we always look at in in the postpartum of every every event. Um, you know, and a lot of factors play into it. Sometimes it's staff and equipment availability. Sometimes it's it's trying to look ahead on the weather forecast, because we all know. We're looking at potentially more weather in and they have another week. So, uh, if you if you all recall, the snow event a couple of years ago, we were going nonstop for like two weeks. That exhausted a lot of people. And so we are, a lesson we took from that event is that we need to try to be a little more. Now. We we need to be more aware of the fact that, you know, we do have a limited amount of staff that can operate the plows. We need to make sure that those are available. When we need them. And so, uh, it it is a series of trade offs, but we we are absolutely keeping an eye on, you know, how are we performing? What feedback are we hearing? Um. From the community, from our, from, you know, internally, from fire department, police department, uh, as we go forward. So.
Uh, Chair, Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, I I know this is really a Parks and Public Works, uh, discussion, but, um. Uh, I I also wanted to share that, uh, I I received feedback, uh, from a number of, uh, community members who felt like. The tertiary streets were a little bit slower in getting plowed this time. Um, so anyway, that's that's definitely feedback that I'm also bringing to, uh, city staff. And, uh, I I haven't heard all the reasoning behind why yet. Uh, tomorrow is the Parks and Public Works committee meeting, so I I hope that then, uh, I'll be able to, uh. Uh, and talk with them more directly. Um, but, uh, let's see, there's nothing else I was going to say about that. Come on, it'll be back to me.
This you got a bit of a preview somewhere.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Uh, Commissioner Alef?
I think at this time, thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to, uh, compliment the city for getting a track done. Um, in what was definitely, uh, what was it, the third priority? Because we were snowed in. I mean, if you get four inches where it doesn't go away, it kind of melts a little bit and then freezes. Um, yeah, without that track, we would have been stuck. I mean, it would have been bottomed out. So anyway, appreciate that. And I do think, um. Yeah, it was kind of interesting how fast that snow came on and how much shoveling we had to do in early December. I was I was kind of surprised about that. But, um, hopefully, we'll we'll see how the rest of the winter goes. Um, hopefully, we can be. Pretty quick on this, on the side streets, because like I'm living on on the ridge. And if fairway is clear and ridge is clear, that's great. And if Fairway is clear and Ridge is clear, that's great. But if all the side streets are not plowed, and it's kind of that thick four inch slushy snow, we're not going anywhere. And so anyway, I do appreciate the single track, though. So that was that was one of the compliments to the city, though, for getting out there pretty quick compared to North Bend, which which added opportunity to hear some of their comments. We did way, way better than those guys. Other item of interest is I do want to encourage, as we roll into twenty twenty three, this will be our last planning commission meeting of twenty twenty two, that we try to attend in person if possible. I think that would be a good way to do it. And in early January, I'd like to see if again, we could host a potluck again, so that we can bring, you know, bring yourselves together and just kind of mingle a little bit and get to socialize. We used to do that as a matter of course. And ever since COVID, that has not in the last couple of years. I know we will be mandated to be having the hybrid meetings. I know that there's been upgrades in the city council chambers. It'll make it easier, but it's still not the same as seeing everybody's smiling face in person. So I definitely want to leave you all to encourage that and more to follow, but I would like to host a, you know, one of the planning commissions that we do a potluck in January. You guys up for that? Does this time work for in-person meetings in the city chambers, city council chambers?
Yes, it is scheduled for council chambers. So we have the room. I mean, we have worked with ladies, you need it at this point. There's no other meetings.
Okay. Okay.
Good. I will add on this on a on a note that I would appreciate some commission members in chambers because presenting, I kind of remember the camera looking at it over here. And you're all on zoom. Like, I can't look at the screen over to my right here, but then I'll just be looking ways. I've got, okay, cameras over here, kind of look that way.
Right. Commissioner Goodman?
Yeah, just speaking for myself, you know, my my wife and I have kind of organized our our schedules around, you know, the ability for me to do this remotely, just in terms of childcare. So just, you know, no, obviously, nobody has to do anything to, you know, just because I have some issue with it, but just my, that's my perspective on it is we've, you know, and over the past, you know, however, many two and a half years, we've kind of organized their life around this type of thing. So it would be a little harder for me to be more flexible on that. Of course, doesn't mean you shouldn't do it, but just want to throw my perspective out there.
Fair enough, fair enough. Who certainly, like I say, I mean, definitely would like to encourage it as as much possible. I do think anyway, I think it could be some benefit, but their my understanding is the hybrid meeting will be available for the balance of twenty twenty three anyway.
Chair, if I could comment on that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I also serve, as I said, on the Parks and Public Works Committee and do the childcare needs. I also just cannot get here to council chambers for it. So it's just the reality that I have to do that remotely. I wish I could be here for it. But I definitely definitely hear the the concern and while I have in the past and will continue to encourage council members and commissioners to try to be in person as much as they can. There shouldn't be any shame in not being here because we all have different things going on. Yeah, don't feel guilty about anything.
Agreed. I was not I was not trying to shame anybody. I was just encouraging. I I appreciate I appreciate the comment. Yeah, I I think, yeah, there's definitely a good a good thing with these hybrid meetings, but again, I'd like to encourage, if we can, some person that we go ahead and do that. Okay, then upcoming schedule?
Right, so to address the upcoming schedule, sorry, Chair. So as I believe all commissioners know, typically, the second December meetings are canceled. Council, you need to take action on that if they're, what will be their next council meeting? I don't, I haven't seen the draft in January yet, but we please enjoy a happy holiday. We're not going to have a planning commission meeting in two weeks, one way or another. The other thing to bring up, of course, is the timing of the first planning meeting in twenty twenty three, because that will be tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, January third. The city, of course, observes the New Year's holiday on Monday, the second is the first of the Sunday. Because of, excuse me, because of the holidays and staff vacations, it is typically very difficult to get the kid to pack it out for that meeting because we have to get it ready next week essentially. And so we are looking to cancel that January third meeting at this time, and then we would, of course, pick up on the chambers. I think it's going to be January seventeenth, another Tuesday, because the month of the payday holiday would be sixty. So you want to get that landing now, make sure you're all aware of that. If there's a strong desire to meet on the third, we can, of course, accommodate that. But our current preferences, it's we're all coming on New Year's. I I'm sure some of you are traveling. You know, you know, stuff like it's a, there are staff vacations involved, so it's probably easier to not have that meeting than we would roll right into talking about the comp plan and whatever else comes up on January seventeenth.
Yeah, no, I agree. We I wanted to, I'm glad we got the historic design review procedures and slight plan code amendments recommendation to council, because I wanted to get that done. But that being done, unless the staff's got something, you know, very urgent, I think the seventeenth will be fine. And I don't see, you know, unless anybody's got any objection, like, that'll be fine for the seventeenth.
Chair, may I add?
Yes.
So between now and the possibly the next planning commission meeting, which will be on the, did you say January seventeenth? There is, again, the potential for P S R C to deliver that comp plan overview. It's it's implementation of the twenty fifty plan and it's a nice executive presentation. It kind of dovetails the work that was trained that was recently done from the Department of Commerce in the short course of local planning. So I'd like to invite the planning commission to watch the presentation and engage as much as they can with the information that's being shared. Of course, it will be recorded, so anybody could go back and listen to the presentation on January ninth. But I believe that's January ninth, the first council meeting of January.
Good. No, appreciate that. Yeah, in fact, so please send links and I'll go ahead and follow on with that. And then we'll even put that if we could as an agenda item on the seventeenth that we cover the highlights. But I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have our 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 meeting. We can talk about it, but we could add it to the future agenda list for training opportunities like we did with the last one on Joe Tobar.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else from anyone? Yes, Commissioner Smith?
Just a a a point of note, I forgot about the the sixteenth, looking ahead to the calendar and January being a holiday. Tuesday nights, unfortunately, I have a I have a conflict with coaching my son's baseball team down in Kent at five P M. So I I typically do not get back until about eight thirty or so. So I'm not sure I can try to join then if you guys are still going.
On the seventeenth?
On this Tuesday, the Saturday, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have practice.
Okay, okay. No, thank you.
And then we'll also thank you in February, because of course we'll have President's Day on the twentieth. So of course, the meeting will get pushed to Tuesday the twenty first.
Yeah, I I I think that's, yes, that it's March, the schedule, the schedule changes in March. That's right. We do it for January and February, just because we're doing it indoors right now.
Yeah, I was going to say, please don't let me not play baseball outside in winter.
Don't get much of that right now.
Okay. Anything else? All right then. Well, everybody, you have a a happy holidays, a happy new year. We will see you in twenty twenty three and look forward to a good year. I've enjoyed working as your chair in twenty twenty two and look forward to a great twenty twenty three. So thank you, everybody, and happy holidays.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.